The City Council will now come to order, Albrius, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to the start of our regular council meetings, we provide an opportunity for citizens to address the council on issues of interest to them. These portions of the meeting are not televised or recorded and are held from 6:30 to 6:55 on meeting nights. Our meeting nights are generally the first and third Tuesdays of the month. If you wish to speak at open podium, to make sure that you're on the agenda and have the opportunity to speak, please contact the city manager's office by noon of the meeting date. 949-8412 is the city manager's office number. Let us know your name, your phone number, and the subject matter you wish to discuss. If time permits, after scheduled speakers, we will give an opportunity for people to just address us spontaneously. But again, these portions of the meeting are not recorded or televised. We have a couple of presentations tonight, and the first one is a donation from the Lions Club. Mr. Lattamer?
Yes, Your Honor, council members, thank you. We're fortunate to start the year off with a couple donations tonight, the first one being from the Lions Club, and they were very specific in wanting it to go towards the outdoor center and towards some microscope equipment, so much easier for the people using the micro. And actually, a better term is the macroscopes. So if you want to see a butterfly up very, very close, we're able to put that under, broadcast it up to a screen, and so really good interactive equipment. And so we really are thankful for them. They support us on an annual basis, and we enjoy being good partners with them.
Do we have representative from the Lions Club here to do that? Okay, all right. Thank you. We need a motion.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Accepting the donation and the amount of $340 from the Eden Prairie Lions Club to be used toward the purchase of microscopes for the Starling Lake Outdoor Center.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Our great thanks to the Lions Club for that donation. The next item is a State Farm donation. Mr. Lattamer?
Yeah, this is on behalf of Gordon Williams. And Mr. Williams is a frequent user of the Senior Center, has been on the board, and he is able, through his volunteer efforts, to then work with his company, former company, State Farm Insurance, to then give a donation on his behalf back to the Senior Center. And he's asking for that to be towards the volunteer recognition event. So we have an event where we have a dinner and a thank you for all those that put in the many hours to help volunteer at the Senior Center, and he would like to help contribute towards that event.
Thank you, Mr. Lattamer. Hasn't he, haven't we gotten donations through him in the past through State Farm?
These are becoming very annual.
Yeah, that's wonderful. Great. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $500 from State Farm Company's foundation on behalf of Gordon Williams for his volunteer service at the Eden Prairie Senior Center to be used toward the 2014 Senior Center Volunteer Recognition Event.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you to State Farm and to Gordon Williams for that great donation. The last item in this area of the agenda tonight is a presentation from our Hennepin County Commissioner, Jan Callison, and Ms. Callison has done a great job of keeping us informed about the activities at Hennepin County in the past, and we see a lot of each other with the Southwest LRT meetings. Is it okay to speak from here? Are these microphones working? Okay, yeah, we're having a microphone problem, so, thank you. No, I don't think so. What about sitting next to Kathy?
Yeah.
I think that's what I was told to have you do.
I'm going to be tempted to say aye when a motion is made.
Yeah.
Anyway, thank you for giving me a chance to be here this evening. I try to get to each of my cities once a year, and I start in August or September. I have 16, and I didn't make it to three this year. So Eden Prairie is one of those, and that means you may see me twice because I may come back in the fall. So I hope you'll find time on your agenda for me again. But this year, I didn't bring a PowerPoint, and I didn't bring any handouts. I simply compiled a list of things that I thought you might be interested in, and I'll run through those, and then if you've got questions or comments, please just let me know. So I'll start, as I always do, it seems, with our budget, but this time is to tell you that we passed our 2014 budget on December 17th. County spending is down slightly. The property tax levy is up slightly. It's a .98 percent increase. That is the same amount that you saw on your truth and taxation statement, so no change there. The rail authority is up slightly as well. That's largely for Southwest LRT, also for Botino LRT, and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, we actually reduced the maximum levy by a million dollars. So there's a slight reduction there. It's not going to change anybody's property tax bill dramatically, but we felt we didn't need to spend that money, and so we reduced it. As we looked at our budget and over the past three years, and including 2014, our average property tax increase annually has been .19 percent. So this 2014 is slightly higher, and that reflects the fact that we renegotiated employee contracts. You may have seen a little headline in the Star Tribune about that. It was one of those stories where the headline said one thing. I think the story said something else. So I want to just review what the agreement was so that it's clear in people's minds. We have two types of compensation that we pay employees at the county. One is a cost of living adjustment. And in five of the past 10 years through this recession, we have not adjusted cost of living for county employees. So for 2014 and 2015, our negotiation with our largest union and the other unions will follow suit most likely is a 2.5 percent annual cost of living adjustment, so each year 2.5 percent. And then for employees within their classification, there are step adjustments that also can be negotiated. In some years, we've frozen those, but not as consistently as the cost of living. So for the next two years, some employees, and this is about 32 percent, so fewer than half, will be eligible for both cost of living and a step adjustment. It's a merit increase. It's usually paid out, but it doesn't have to be. And so when you take those two items, the impact on aggregate salaries is 3.5 percent. So 2.5 percent for cost of living, another 1 percent. Usually, the merit increases go to the lower-paid employees because they're at the lower rate of steps, and it's not nearly as dramatic as the headline in the Star Tribune. And we looked at adjusting salaries because we're worried about competition and worried about keeping our employees. We spend a lot to train them. As with the city, most of our services are delivered through people, and if we train them and they go to private industry, or they go to another county, or they go to Eden Prairie, we've made an investment, and we've lost that. So we think this will keep us competitive. We particularly heard from the county attorney, who was worried about attracting and retaining young attorneys as he looks at the private sector, and so we made this adjustment, and I wanted you to be aware of that. You may be aware that your library has increased hours in 2014. We were able to increase hours generally throughout the system about 250 hours. There were a couple of libraries that saw a reduction in hours, a couple of libraries that saw their hours stay the same. Most libraries saw an increase, and this is really the last step, I believe, in the integration of the Minneapolis Public Library System with the Hennepin County Library System. We had, I think, 14 sets of library hours. We now have four. And in Eden Prairie, you've picked up six hours. Typically, your library opens now at nine instead of at 10 o'clock. But if people aren't certain, they should check and make sure that the hours the library expects will be open, still is open. And we also have increased our Ask Us and Help Desk hours, so there are more library services available to your residents. We took the social service center, or are taking the social service center and turning it into, the service center, turning it into a social service satellite, and that means that there'll be limited availability of some county services here in Eden Prairie. It'll be open three days a week. People will come by appointment. This is part of our strategy to decentralize our social services so that people can go to their community, and we can partner with community providers as well. So I checked on the construction schedule for that, and construction is supposed to start the beginning of April, and occupancy is predicted to be the end of July. So that's coming up. Southwest LRT, I thought you might be interested in that, and I want to thank the mayor for her work. Thanks staff for the work that they've done. It's been really important to have your support, and I appreciate all the work and all the support. Councilmember Nelson as well. And so you may know this already, but there was a hiatus that the governor asked for so we could kind of recalibrate, if you will, make sure we're on the right track. I understand that the draft report from this latest round of investigation should be available in January. The final report should be available in either February or March, and the calendar right now, which right now shows municipal consent in June or July, so five or six months out. And again, those are drafts, subject to change, but that's the best information I had today. And then finally, as I prepared for these meetings, I actually went back to my record of constituent issues to see what I was hearing from your constituents. I thought you might find that interesting. And it reconfirmed for me that generally in my district, which is the western suburbs, and I have just the northern third of Eden Prairie, roads are a big issue. I mean, whether it's the quality of the roads, or it's the signals, it's pedestrian access, it's bicycle access, it's all of those. But that's not what I hear from your residents. And again, that may be because I just have that northern third. So there really wasn't a pattern from your residents. Because we closed the service center, some calls about that, some calls about Southwest LRT. At the time when we had the service center open, the fact that we couldn't take Visa, we solved that by closing the service center.
[laughing]
Not an issue any longer. You know, and some miscellaneous issues, but not really a pattern. And I probably don't hear from your residents as much as I hear from Minnetoka residents, probably not surprisingly, and other parts of the county. But typically, the roads are the issue that people are most concerned about in transportation. So that's what I prepared for you. Again, I'm grateful for the time you're giving me tonight, and I'm happy to take your questions or your comments.
Any questions for Ms. Callison, Commissioner Callison?
I have one question. You talked about salary adjustments.
Yep.
Is the Hennepin County Hospital or Health Center, is that all separate from
That is.
their employees or separate from your employees?
They are separate. So HCMC is a subsidiary of the county. It still has a connection, but it's independent from a governance standpoint. It has its own board of directors with two county commissioners serving on it. So those salaries come under their purview, and Councilmember Case was asking about our budget. Their costs are not in our budget either.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yes.
Just could you quickly share your district parameters, not all 16 cities? And then Randy Johnson serves the remainder part of Eden Prairie. Maybe quickly share what he covers, just so our people know who to call, particularly if they want to call based on where they live.
So first, in terms of Eden Prairie, I have, as I said, the northern third. I tend to think of that as Valley View Road. That's kind of rough, but that gives you a good idea for it. And Randy Johnson's district is Bloomington, Richfield, and then two-thirds of Eden Prairie. I have, as I said, all a part of 16 cities. I won't name them all. They're generally, I can.
[laughing]
They're generally, they're generally the western suburbs, so all of Edina, all of Hopkins, all of Minnetoka, northern third of Eden Prairie, and then virtually all the cities around Lake Minnetoka, although I have only half a mound. So it's, geographically, it's quite large, and it's also quite diverse, if you think in terms of the size of the cities. So Minnetoka is the largest city at around 50,000, although Eden Prairie must be pretty close to that. And the smallest, I believe, is Woodland, which has, I'm going to guess, about 500 residents.
And again, just for our residents to understand the tremendous responsibilities that each of you have. There's seven of you on a commission that's elected that has a budget of 1.8 billion.
Correct.
Which I know Randy says often is larger, and I don't know what the number is, 60 or 70 countries on Earth.
It used to be 12 states, but I
So quite, really enormous amount of responsibility. So we appreciate you taking your time and coming in this evening.
You're welcome. Anything else?
Thank you very much for coming today.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thanks for the time. I appreciate it.
Keep warm.
Thank you.
Is there a motion for approval of the agenda and other items of business?
Move approval.
Second. Anything to add?
Mayor, I have a couple things to mention. You mentioned earlier at open podium, but we haven't officially added under the report of Community Development Director a green mark, a Green Neighborhood Update? That would fall under her report. The other golden rod you have is related to the, besides Green Neighborhood, is the bee, beekeeping ordinance. So that's on here anyway, but the resolution's been updated, so we'll cover that when we get to the beekeeping update. And then third, we had a consent item that we put on Other Business. Other Business A is approving a maintenance agreement related to UHG. We have another UHG-related item, and that is under Consent 8M. That's related to agreement with Hennepin County that involves UHG. So we'd also like to just move that to Other Business as well.
Okay.
So we have those two items on Other Business. So when you get to consent, we'll assume since we moved this, when you approve the agenda, you're not voting on M.
So this annotated agenda is accurate?
That's correct.
All right. All in favor of the agenda as amended?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the council workshop held on Tuesday, December 3rd?
Move approval.
Second. Any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes for the city council meeting held at the same date?
So moved.
Second.
Any corrections to those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent calendar. Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval, and again, just minus M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to clarify or pull for discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is Other Business, approval of a maintenance agreement with United Health Group. Mr. Getcho.
Mayor, again, these, both of these items are consent items related to UHG, and you can vote on both separately, but I'll cover them quickly. Item A is a maintenance agreement between the city and UHG for how we maintain the landscaping and irrigation in and around City West Parkway and 62. And then the other item is in agreement with the county for what would be the next phase of Shady Oak Road improvements, but there is a financial commitment that UHG is a part of as well in that construction cooperation agreement.
Okay, so both items have been combined into this one motion, is what you're saying?
No, I think, no, I'm just saying that they're in one area, and I'm just covering both, so I'd ask that you have two separate votes.
This agenda doesn't have those posts on here.
Oh, so I'm sorry. You would have to, you would make the motion on the annotated on that one, and then do another motion on the construction cooperative agreement for Shady Oak Road improvements, which is item 8M on your consent.
Okay. All right. Any questions for Mr. Getcho on item 9A?
Well, again, these are being, these are consent items. Normally, we would not even talk about them, but we're pulling them out of respect for the process because I work, I'm employed by United Health Group. So I will be abstaining from both of these.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for approval for item A?
Move to approve the maintenance agreement with United Healthcare Services, Inc., as it relates to the Shady Oak Road improvements.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one abstention.
And one abstention. Okay, is there a motion for the item that was formerly M under Consent Calendar?
Move to adopt the resolution approving construction cooperative agreement number PW294913.
Second. Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passed.
And one abstention.
Thank you. Payment of claims.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a question. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Aho?
Aye.
Councilmember Butcher-Wexler?
Aye.
Councilmember Case?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Terrell Lukens?
Aye.
The next item is the first reading of an ordinance amending the city code relating to the keeping of honeybees in the city. Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You may recall about a year ago, this time last year, I think it may have been our first meeting of the year in 2013, we were approached by a resident asking that the city council, or end of 2012, that the city council consider the allowing of the keeping of honeybees in the city of Eden Prairie. And we actually do allow the keeping of honeybees in Eden Prairie, but only in rural districts, so that's restricted to very few lots and areas of the city. So the council asked the city, the police department, ultimately, the city attorney to conduct some research and analysis into all the details and issues surrounding being a city that would allow beekeeping in the city of Eden Prairie. And we also had a few workshops in the course of 2013 where we came forward to the city council with some data and information, best practices, neighboring city ordinances related to the keeping of bees, which leads to the staff recommendation here tonight to allow beekeeping in the city of Eden Prairie under several different scenarios. First of all, in our city, we're talking about it being a registration process where someone who's interested in the keeping of bees would apply to the city to register for beekeeping and would do so on an annual basis. However, the first time that they would register, the city would inspect the operation and then would follow a set of parameters, which you see in the code relating to setbacks, the need for a water source, barriers, and other issues related to beekeeping that we would expect that resident to follow. And then we would also notify residents within 200 feet that someone's interested in a beekeeping operation. And there are other cities that vary in the regulations. Some of them don't even require a registration process. They simply have a set of rules, many of which we have researched and followed on best practices. But I think the feeling was through some discussion and analysis that we're not, we're not assuming that we're going to be inundated with requests. And the idea that we have a registration process is certainly something that the city staff can manage and maintain and keep an inventory of, and know where the keeping of bees are in the city of Eden Prairie and notify others. So then, through that process, there would be an opportunity for neighboring residences to raise an issue or concern with the city prior to the administrative issue of a registered, registration for bees. So those are some of the highlights. As you can see, the details of the ordinance are in here. We talked, I gave a little bit of the highlight information, but the city attorney who helped prepare the ordinance is here to answer questions, as are members of our police department, who spent a good chunk of 2013 doing some research.
So just to clarify, the registration is going to require now that people that have 10 acres or more or in rural zoned areas will now have to register?
That is correct.
Okay, and then I thought when we had a discussion before, there was some discussion about the fact that these more residential beekeepers, they can't produce goods for sale, right? This is for personal consumption. Is that in the ordinance?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it isn't explicitly in the ordinance in those terms. What's in the ordinance is that if someone is doing it as a home occupation, you have to follow the home occupation rules in the code, which require everything to be inside.
Oh, so that would be a problem.
That would be a problem.
Okay, little trap doors for bees so they can go in and out. Okay, any other questions? Okay, this isn't a public hearing, but is there anybody in the audience that wanted to address the council on this issue? Yes, Councilmember Case?
You just raised one issue with currently, do we know exactly how many beehives we have that are in rural areas in the city?
We do not, because we have been aware of maybe one or two that are simply because of any calls that we may have had or dealings we may have had with a resident. But because we don't currently have a registration process, we would not know.
So my only question is that we have two fairly decent-sized farms still left in the city. I don't even know if they keep bees, but if they did or wanted to, and we have suddenly a restriction that it can't be sold off rural property, that seems
No, rural property is excluded, correct?
Is it excluded? That's what I, I guess that's what I'm asking, actually.
The, if it's under a home occupation, you can't, you can't have a home occupation outdoors. A rural property engaging in agricultural and animal and bee activities would not be excluded from this ordinance. They're allowed. For instance, in the colony location section, it states where bee colonies may be kept, and excluding lots that are zoned rural and 10 acres or more in size, no hive shall occupy any front yard. So in a rural area more than 10 acres in size, that restriction does not apply, having it in, that you can't have it in the front yard.
I mean, we truly only have two examples that come to my mind at the moment, and again, I'm not even sure that they have bees or that they're interested, but if they were, you're saying they could, and also they could sell because they're not held.
Yes.
Any other questions? Councilmember Nelson, did you have your light on, or was that from previous?
Yeah. Yeah, I do have some questions about exactly how this is going to work for neighbors that do have a serious problem, you know, say, a serious allergy in their family, that they're notified. And I assume at that point, they can raise an objection, perhaps with medical forms and everything coming in. Where, does it, I wasn't sure that it says specifically in here that that full 30 days will be, have to be waited, and then there's some kind of potential hearing process about whether this gets approved or not. How will that work for, say, a family with a child that if they get stung, it's a life-threatening event? How do they get into this process exactly?
The, the registration wouldn't be issued until the 30 days expired, and they would get into the process by filing their concerns with the, with the city. There's an appeal process of a decision to issue our registration. The appeal goes to the city manager and his office to consider that. So that is the process that one would follow. There is no provision in the ordinance, though, that says that a registration shall not be issued if there is an objection.
Right, but is there a period of time before having to appeal, that there is a consideration of whether or not to give this person the right to keep bees if there are objections from immediate neighbors? You know, is there a process where people think of it, or do they have to automatically appeal the license that was given? There's no way to do it before the license is given?
No, I'm sure that if there was a request of the type that you discussed, that prior to making a decision to issue or not issue the registration, to register the beekeeper, that information would be taken into consideration.
Okay, but there won't be a specific hearing where somebody could come and show up, and it would be just us. I've had a concern with this all the way along because having had some bee sting allergies in my own family, knowing that there's other families in town for which this can be a life-or-death situation in their family about doing this, especially when there's a limited number of people who want to, and Eden Prairie has not allowed this for, what, at least 20, 30 years? If in the process, you know, a person does object to it, and the right to keep bees is given to a person anyway, what kind of legal situation are we under if then that person or their child or whoever is stung ends up in the hospital with lots of bills? What kind of liability do we have when they notified this was a problem, and we allowed somebody to have beehives anyway, and then this kind of thing? Are we at risk for, you know, lawsuit and liability at this point over having put beehives in addition to the wild bees, which obviously occur, and you probably can't tell the difference between the two? What kind of liability are we under for having been and put ourselves, be in that kind of a situation?
It's my opinion that we are not at risk for liability because we allowed the registration that, of a beekeeper on a property. The cases that have imposed liability on cities for animals and damage caused by animals are in situations where, for instance, with dangerous dogs, if a city knew that a dog was dangerous and did nothing to require that the dog be declared dangerous and subject to the dangerous dog rules, and then the dog attacks someone, there's been liability for failure to follow the state statute that, after having received that notice. But I do not believe that there's, in my opinion, there's no liability for allowing a registration of bees because we're not responsible for the condition of anyone living in the community. If we knew someone was bringing in killer bees, that would be a different story. Then it would be akin to a dangerous dog.
Do you want discussion at this point?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I'll I, you know, I'll tell you right now, I'm going to vote against having this, simply because though I do appreciate that they've put in a lot of setbacks and fencing requirements, so I'm not quite as appalled by this. However, I am not sure since we have peanut nut free zones in our schools, even if it's only one child that has a serious problem with it. Churches are even going to that now. I know my own church, you know, when you bring food for funerals, you can't bring anything with nuts anymore. I'm not sure that a family, though obviously they have some precautions taken because there are wild bees out there, that they should be put in a position of living near a beekeeping operation if and when they have a family member with a very severe allergy to it. You know, not something mild, they swell up slightly more than normal, but the kind of thing where they, they keep an EpiPen in a sphere. I don't really believe that some person's hobby should be able to impact that family to the point where they either are more threatened by some problem or feel that they're in a position where they have to move. So, but I am more happy with this than when we had it before. But I still can't vote for something that could force somebody to move out of the community. And simply to have somebody else have something as a recreational activity, I don't know that we really do that in many other areas of the city. And it's not as though we've had a huge overwhelming number of people wanting to come into this. I'm hoping that not too many people will and it won't come up often and no one living near them has this issue. But I really don't see any reason for it and I see a lot of potential reason not to do it. I am sensitive to the fact that bees generally are dying out there and, you know, we need to do something for bees, but they don't know why bees are dying. So putting a few more hives into a city, I don't think does anything for that overall problem. And, you know, if automatically our having bees in Eden Prairie stops the bee die off in the country, okay, but it doesn't. So, and I'm pretty sure I'm going to get voted down on this, but I still don't think there's enough want and that there is a bad enough downside for a few families in town. I have no idea how many. But I think that no one should feel that they have to move for the safety of a family member, for someone else's hobby.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Russell?
Yes, I need to correct Ms. Damon. I was thinking of the notice and response to councilmember Nelson's question about the notice. I was thinking of the notice of denial of the registration. Right now, the ordinance says that upon the registration, the joining properties will be notified of the registration, giving them notice that there, this has been registered. And in a brief conversation here with the city manager, recommended that, that we do what I thought was actually in there, that we do provide the notice prior to issuing the registration so they have an opportunity to file that concern about, health concern. We've had many discussions about this and I apologize for misstating that inadvertently.
Will that be changed then before second reading?
Yes.
Excellent.
That's my recommendation that, and I'll, the police chief is here hearing me say this, so that's what we'll discuss tomorrow morning at about 9:15.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, will the notification to the neighbors include what the regulations are, stipulating that the neighbor can have bees, like the water supply, like the setbacks? Because I know we're not going to get out in there and monitor things, right? We're not going to be inspecting bee operations. So it's going to have to be one of those things that neighbors kind of help enforce, correct?
Well, there, there will be an initial inspection. And then the potential to allow subsequent inspections, for instance, if a complaint was filed.
So we retain that, right?
And with, you know, the city has not drafted the form of notice, but I anticipate that the notice would direct people to the location of where the regulation is. And especially in the first number of months after this goes into effect would be more prominent than simply in a referral to the city code, that this would be something the city would include on its website to say, here are the regulations.
Mr. Getchell, I'm trying to get a handle on how many we might expect to ask for a license or to register to beekeep. And I know we had members of the public who came to us with this as their issue. It's not something we generated thinking, we have nothing else to do, let's figure out an ordinance on beekeeping. There were some interest. And do you recall how many?
I, I, I do have a rough estimate. So I think throughout the initial request and then throughout all of last year, we could probably think of somewhere between, you know, up to five and possibly 10 potential registrations. But it would be less than a dozen. And I think obviously the, the news that we now allow it could bring a few more people that hadn't been following previously. But I would put that anywhere from, from five to 10 initially.
And then this was in the news and we've discussed it at council meetings, so the public is aware of this. I have not personally received any phone calls, one way or another, on this issue. Have you, through city websites, city connect, any of the social media that we have gotten any kind of response?
Yeah, the responses that we have and why I mentioned five to 10 would be those people that have said that they would potentially register an operation. So those would be the people.
But you didn't get any negatives?
Not, I did not receive any negatives via email or phone call.
And then could somebody give us a brief synopsis of the experience with other cities that are allowing this? Maybe it's the police department?
Sure, yeah, we can have the, the police department weigh in.
That's what I thought. We did work with all the cities that have bee ordinances and actually none of them reported any negative call regarding the beehives. We actually had one, we only identified one that happened in Eden Prairie, and it was one that was, you know, a lot worse. And it was very simple, thanks to where the bees were going over to neighboring property to get water. And what happened is the water source on that property had malfunctioned and wasn't there. So it was very easy for us to put it up and the person wasn't aware of it and fixed it and the problem was resolved.
Okay.
In our research, we really applaud any of the cities that allow bees that would try to say that, you know, they have problems in the city.
Okay. Thank you very much. Because your microphone isn't working, I'm just going to repeat that a little, trying to very briefly. Our police chief said that the, the city did look into the experiences of cities that do allow beekeeping in residential areas, and none reported any problems with their beekeeping ordinance. We actually had one complaint about beekeeping and it was a beekeeper who obviously was on rural property because that's the only place we allow it now, correct? And that was a issue of water supply drying up or malfunctioning. And once that was cleared up, the issue went away. So it really has not apparently been a problem with cities. Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
Is there a motion?
Yeah, I will move to approve the first reading of an ordinance. Amending city code chapter nine by adding section 9.73, requiring registration and establishing regulations relating to the keeping of honeybees in the city.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion passes. Now we get to a series of appointments that we do every January. And the very first item is a resolution designating the official city newspaper. Mr. Getchell, did you want to say anything about that?
Mayor, I'll just kind of mention all the appointments, you know, as you mentioned, are required in, in many different areas at the beginning of every given year, such as the meeting times of the city council and the HRA, the designation of an acting mayor and an official newspaper. So we need to take action on these appointments. And then also, this is also the time where the council members are appointed to the many different organizations that the city is involved in. So you can move one by one through all of the appointments. You need a separate motion for each, but you can take them individually.
Okay. Thank you. First motion on city newspaper. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution designating the Eden Prairie News, right, as the official city newspaper for the year 2014.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next.
Charlotte's heart stopped, there was a little missed beat there for a second.
Just wanted to make sure I had it right.
The next item is meeting dates, et cetera. Does somebody want to make that motion, item B?
Resolution, okay. A move to adopt the resolution designating the official meeting dates, times, and place for the city of Eden Prairie, city council in 2014, appointing councilmember Ron Case as acting mayor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The resolution regarding the HDA.
Let's see, move to...
HRA.
HRA. I move to adopt the resolution appointing city council members to serve as commissioners for the Eden Prairie Housing and Redevelopment Authority and appointing Nancy Tyra Lukens as chair, Rick Getchell as executive director, and councilmember Kathy Nelson as secretary for calendar year 2014.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Item D.
If we're moving down the line, I'll make it, but...
But you're appointing you.
I probably should.
Okay, I'll see, move to adopt resolution designating, let's see, suburban authority, councilmember Case as director.
Robert Ellis. He's director and me as alternate.
Robert Ellis as director and councilmember Case as the alternate.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Item E.
I will move to approve appointment of the mayor as delegate and council members as alternates to the National League of Cities.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item F.
I'll move to appoint, approve the appointment of mayor to the municipal legislative commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item G.
Let's see, I move to approve appointment of, Ron Case, councilmember Ron Case to the Southwest Cable Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Appointment to the Eden Prairie Foundation, item H.
I will move to approve appointment of Kathy Nelson to the Eden Prairie Foundation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I-494 Corridor Commission.
Move to approve the appointment of Brad Aho to the I-494 Corridor Commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Appointment to the City and School Facilities Use Task Force.
Move to approve the appointment of Sherry Butcher to the City and School Facilities Use Task Force.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Appointment of the Assistant Weed Inspector.
Move to appoint Jeff Cordis, or maybe the mayor.
No, no.
He's already, he's a major inspector.
You're the chief. Move to appoint Jeff Cordis as Assistant Weed Inspector for the city of Eden Prairie.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item L.
Item L is move to adopt the resolution appointing, sorry, councilmember Case, Sue Kotever, and Fire Chief Espenson to the Eden Prairie Fire Relief Association.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Reports of the Community Development Director, Green Neighborhood Update, Ms. Jeremiah.
Got through that more quickly than I expected, mayor and councilmembers. As you recall, the Green Neighborhood is proposed on an eight acre site at the southwest corner of Eden Prairie Road and Scenic Heights Road, kind of the frontage to 212 there. And of course, we discussed this property as part of the strategic plan for housing and economic development and identified it as a high priority when you adopted that in October of 2012. Since then, of course, we've gone through the developer selection process and in August of 2013, you selected Homestead to be the developer for this project. And they're calling the proposal Eden Gardens, so you probably remember that, that name as well. And the plan that we discussed with the council is to wait until we get final approval of that development and they also have their financing in place before we would actually purchase the property from MinDOT and simultaneously transfer, transfer it to the developer so that there's no risk to the city of winding up owning the property without an active development. And we did talk about the project a little bit more in August. And at that time, too, we, we discussed the mid-market component and the fact that if we did a percentage of mid-market rather than all mid-market, there could be a way for the market rate to help with the overall project costs and therefore hopefully eliminate the need for any cash subsidy. So we're still following along in that rain. And at this point, it looks like over 40% of the units would actually be market rate. So, you know, it's getting to the point where we're not really calling it a mid-market development, we're just calling it the Green Neighborhood. It does have a mid-market component, but there's also a substantial market rate component. And as far as the schedule at this point, Homestead Partners is trying to meet a schedule where they would submit their planning applications, including preliminary plat and PUD on January 17th. And if all goes according to that schedule, then a planning commission public hearing would be held on February 24th. And the city council public hearing could follow as early as March 18th. And in preparation for this preliminary plat submittal, there has been a neighborhood process. There have been three neighborhood meetings held to date, two large scale meetings, as well as a smaller neighborhood meeting that was more discussional with the immediately adjacent neighbors to try to get some more detailed feedback at that point. And all of the public comments from those neighborhood meetings, as well as from it being up on the city connect site, have been supplied to the developers. So we are aware and the developers are aware of the traffic concerns, for example, that were brought up tonight. And the traffic analysis is being required as part of the, the planning application. So we do expect to have a traffic study completed hopefully by January 17th and made available to the public as part of those preliminary applications. So we are taking a look at some of the concerns we heard with regard to Thatcher Road, but also other impacts in the neighborhood and to nearby intersections. So due to the fact that we've had these neighborhood meetings, there have been a number of plan revisions based on the feedback from the neighborhood and also from staff. And the concept plan that the neighborhood originally saw has already been revised. It's in process to be released again to them with the plans that will go to the public hearing. And some of the comments that we heard was that the open space in the middle of the development that was to have a pool and kind of a, a private association area, the neighborhood would prefer that there's more public access to that area. So the pool has been eliminated and there have been more public types of features that the neighborhood could potentially enjoy some walking paths and a shelter that would have green components. I'll talk about that more. Another concern we heard was that there were private drives that might be against backyards or side yards that are in the existing neighborhood. So the lots have been reoriented where they're adjacent to the existing neighborhood to ensure that where there are side yards, they meet existing side yards and where there are existing backyards, they will meet backyards as well. So this will help provide more green space. It also eliminates the private drives or alleys that they saw closer to the property line and those units that would be adjacent to the existing would be front loaded. The driveways would come off the street, so there wouldn't be any traffic circulation behind the buildings or close to the existing neighbors. And we think that was something that we, we heard clearly as well. So that's already been, been changed and they should see that in the plans that come out. And the adjacent homes would also be the ones that would be the market rate. So I think you heard the neighborhood does understand that portion of it, that those would, would definitely be similar. that those would, would definitely be similar in, in value to what they have out there today. There also were a number of other concerns that staff raised with regard to some of the dead ends in the cul-de-sac and how it would be accessed by trucks and by school buses and the like. So a lot of that has been changed to ensure better maneuverability. And we're also been working with the developer to just make it as green and comprehensively green as possible so that the neighborhood does basically speak in all manners to this green sustainability concept, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that. So I think you recall from August that the developer was already proposing a very green, energy-efficient home model, utilizing the Green Path certification, where energy efficiency would be much higher than the normal home. And we are still hearing that there isn't anywhere in the state of Minnesota where this has been done on a neighborhood-wide basis, that there are some individual homes that are being built to this certification, but we haven't seen a neighborhood come through with that. The developer has also told us they're committed to constructing the model home with solar panels and making the design of the other homes so that they can be, the buyers can actually select solar panels on the other homes as well, as an option. In the central common area, the pavilion, kind of the park shelter feature, would have solar panels on the south side of the roof, and the solar would be used to power bollard lighting around the pedestrian path. Any excess could, you know, potentially go to other lighting as well. We believe the streetlights will be solar LED. The north side of the pavilion roof is proposed to be a green roof. I guess there, there is a park or kind of an environmental center that has already used that, that type of a structure with a green roof. So we're kind of looking, looking at that and trying to see how that works and how it's maintained and such. There'd also be garden plots that could be used by residents to grow their, grow their own vegetables, so that kind of grow, grow local concept. And we're hoping that we can find a concept whereby there would be a recycled irrigation system to help with the, the watering needs of those vegetable gardens, and if there is watering needs of the rest of the development, although we're looking at a very low-water type of landscaping solution, and hopefully no mow as well for the green sustainability by using lower types of plants that can be both, you know, aesthetically pleasing and, and potentially take the place of, of traditional turf. So those are some of the, excuse me, concepts that we're working on with the developer. The Conservation Commission has seen this within the last couple of months, and they will be also getting an update as this goes through the more formal process. So they have been involved with the green features. We have also been hearing that there's substantial market interest from residents, current residents of Eden Prairie. Firefighters have, have been following this and, and interested in it. There was a Fairfield resident who expressed interest even at one of the neighborhood meetings. So there is substantial interest, and the developer is extremely encouraged by the already list that he has of, of interested residents. I think one item that I didn't really hit on in the report is with regard to the noise and the visual impacts. That is something that we're also discussing with the developer with regard to whether there'd be kind of a before-and-after visual survey. And we'll talk more about whether there could actually be some, some noise monitoring so that we could see potentially a before-and-after as well. So with that, I'll see if there are any questions.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'm delighted that they're going to have solar as an automatic option. I assume one of these options that you pay for extra, like you do in so many homes. Have they looked into the possibility of at least in part of the area where there's a little bigger yards of doing geothermal as an option as well? And is that something we can ask them where appropriate to have as an option? Is, that's something that's much easier to put in as something is being built than it is to put in afterwards?
Your honor, councilmember Nelson, we have discussed with them the potential for geothermal. They are not getting good feedback, as I understand it, with regard to the feasibility of doing that in this neighborhood. I am not, you know, an engineer that is aware of all of the issues involved with the, the geothermal, but I would say that looks less likely. I will bring that up again with the developer and get a better status report on that, but it does look like solar, right now, is the direction that, that is being pursued.
Councilmember Aho.
In our, in our open podium today, we had a couple of topics that were brought up. Traffic, as you mentioned, noise and visual screening, and via the berms. But one of the things that I haven't heard you talk about is, is density. And, you know, I'm very sensitive to the issue where people have a development, and they expect adjacent developments to be done such that they are pretty similar in cost and, and density. And so I'm, I'm a little concerned about this in terms of the density being higher than the surrounding neighborhoods. So what have we done to, to look at that and address that?
As far as the proposals that we received from the development community, we did select the proposal with the lowest density. So that's the first thing that we did. I think that, you may recall, there was a proposal with a senior apartment building in it, as well as single-family adjacent to the neighborhood, which obviously had a, a much higher density. I think it was in the hundred and twenty unit range. And then the single-family proposals that we saw were mostly generally in this range, but this was the, the lower density of them. And so that was the first thing that we did. In order to accommodate some of the, the goals of the initiative, it, it is actually in keeping with the green concept that you do more of a, generally a cluster housing and try to preserve the open space in more of a common area in order to, again, provide greater efficiency and sustainability, and also the neighborhood utilization of the, the common area. So it does seem to be in keeping with the standards that, that we were looking at. So, and another piece of it is, of course, the trying to eliminate the need for any type of a cash subsidy for the, the development and still meet all of these criteria. So in trying to balance those, I think that, you know, you, you, you did kind of see the density where it was heading in August. We are going to be reviewing it from the impacts perspective, and have tried to do that, you know, particularly around the edge, where there will be the larger lots, the more traditional front-loaded types of homes that are much, you know, similar to what is existing out there today, backyard to backyard, side yard to side yard. So we're addressing it, I guess, more from the impact perspective than a sheer number type of comparison.
I guess from my perspective, I, my comfort level is not high with this project, and that was kind of one of my, one of my concerns all along, and, and that's why I really don't support it. I think we're being a little too prescriptive in, in trying to set the pricing and things like that, which are dictating the, the amount of density at, at this project. And so that's why, one of the reasons I really don't support it.
Any other comments? Councilmember Case.
Yeah, I just have some thoughts, Brad swirling around in my head. And I don't, I don't disagree with you that in the past, we've tried, anytime developments have come in, especially infill, to be really sensitive to what's surrounding it. And we do that through transitions, which I think we're being really sensitive to. At least the idea that we want to transition this carefully, we try, try not to ever put higher density, multiple housing right next to single-family homes or closer single-family lots next to larger half-acre lots. So we always have been sensitive to that. Same time, I mean, I can think back over many instances over the decade and a half where we'll have a parcel like this that sits, sits differently. So like, the neighbors sit back in more of a residential suburban area. This sits on the corner of two four-lane roads. So divorced from where it borders, you could almost argue it should be commercial. I mean, they're out of, don't anyone panic here, I'm not favoring this. There, there could be a gas station there. I mean, what a great site coming right off of 212. And it sits on the corner of two four-lane roads. So it's not your classic half-acre lot residential area tucked back, you know, far away from development. So it's, it's a different sort of organism like that, and I think, I think we're on the right track to, to, with our transitioning buffering. The other thing is, you know, we've never really talked. If this goes out on the open market and some private owner buys it, then private owners of land have rights in America to actualize the full potential value of that property. One could argue that it has much larger capacity value than, say, you know, half-acre lots. They could almost go back to the potential commercial value and come back in with, we, we can always turn it down, I understand. But, but nonetheless, we can't at some level prohibit the full actualization of value on a parcel of land that sits on two four-lane roads. So our control, I think, is valuable to the neighborhood for us to make sure the transitioning buffer occurs correctly. Whatever density's in there, again, thinking of our past history with protecting contiguous bordering properties, whatever density's in there, you'd have to make a really strong, I don't even know how you'd support it, argument that all that density's going to come back into the neighborhood and impact it. I think it goes the opposite way. All, all that density goes out onto the four-lane roads. So it's not going to have the, the negative impacts that you might if you've got eight acres tucked way back in, like, like up on Duck Lake Road, we had some properties up there. Robert, you live, where's Robert? You live on one. That we had some issues with making sure to match carefully because it spilled out onto the contiguous properties. This one is not. So as much as, I mean, I understand completely from a philosophical standpoint, your discomfort, and I think even some of us share some of that with, I don't know if you want to call it government control. But if, if, if you want vision, if you, I mean, no, no, no real great visionary decision-making probably has ever taken place without some government process that, that takes a parcel like this and says, let's, let's try to make a statement that really can better humanity. I mean, really, I mean, that's a little bit big, but-
But it sells to our grants and-
Yeah, absolutely. If no other development like this in the state has ever been done that can show that we can actually take a development, and you know what? People will buy houses that have solar. People will buy houses that actually have LED solar lighting, that they, that they actually want that and like that. I think developers will pay attention across the state. I, I really do. And, and at that point, we will have done something important at, at no cost really, or very minimal cost to our taxpayers. So I think we have an opportunity to do something here that's right, and I think we can protect the concerns of the neighbors. I just want to say one thing. The biggest concern that we've heard from neighbors, and it came out tonight, really, is the connection of their road. And we all understand that, too. That being said, we have examples like that across the city where some of these roads were always planned to be connected. Whether this one was planned to be connected since Scenic Heights maybe wasn't really even a thought necessarily. But at some point, we wanted another way out because that's a long way out. And some of our research shows that some of the most traffic will be off of Thatcher itself, and it might increase a little bit, you know, extended back in the neighborhood. But I think, and again, it's up to the council, so I can't speak for everyone. But I think whatever project comes through, even if it's just big, huge, half-acre lots with big, huge, eight-hundred-thousand-dollar houses sitting on a corner of two four-lane roads, which I don't really get, I think Thatcher will get connected through that. So I think that, that's a kind of a separate issue over here that's getting confused. And we even heard from a resident tonight, open forum, that, that said, basically, the neighborhood understands something's coming in, and they're, they're, they're pretty much okay with that idea. Their concern really is, is primarily their Thatcher Road connection. A little bit the density, though I don't think the density will have an impact on them. A little bit this berm, which I think is a big deal, but that berm is not sitting on land they own. And so that, that's a tough one, too. So the really biggest issue becomes Thatcher Road connection, which is probably going to happen regardless anyway. So let's not mix that, well, we have to be careful not to mix that issue up with the other parts of this that it seems like the neighbors really don't have as much of an issue with. So just a few comments back. I, I, I understand what you're feeling. I just give some thought to this as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Wickstrom.
Yeah, I wanted to say, councilmember Case, that was very well stated. And those are, it echoes many of the thoughts that I have about this project, too. I think this project is incredibly exciting. I have loved the process that we followed in it, throwing an idea out there, capturing some really very, very good ideas from developers of what if, what might be. And I have to tell you, this is our future. I've said it before, this is how developments are going to be built 20 years from now, 15 years from now. This is what our neighborhoods will look like with all of these elements, the solar, the streetlights that are LED, green roofs, garden plots that are community efforts. So I, I really support going forward, following the process as we would, and seeing where this goes. We'll have a better idea, it looks like, coming up in February, of what the details will be. Very exciting for us to look at that. But I think we need to follow this through and see what we come up with. But I also understand that when you start something, or when you try something very innovative like this, there's always this sort of fear factor that, you know, what if it doesn't work? Or what if it's not what we expect? And that, the commitment, I can say, on the part of the council and on the staff, is that we will turn every stone. We will look at everything. This isn't like just pie in the sky. We will make sure things are tested and true as we put them in the development and see where it goes. But I want the neighbors to know, we hear you, and we will look at your concerns very, very carefully as we look at this development. We haven't approved it yet, we're still going through a process. But I think it's incredibly exciting.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson.
I, I too like where this development is going. I think you really need to try to make an effort for energy-efficient housing, things that are going to last for a long time, things that try new things. Plus, this isn't the first time Eden Prairie has put in a development with mixed kind of housing. I live in the Preserve, which was built in the 70s and 80s. And it not only has regular-sized homes and large homes and townhomes, it has apartments, and it has condominiums, and it has group homes. And it has lots of trails and pools and all sorts of things that I love having as a resident of that particular area. It's about a thousand-family condominium, except it's all kinds of housing. That's worked well for, what, 40 years? And this is much smaller, obviously, but it's sort of the same step as the Preserve might have been back in the 70s of wanting a little bit more and, you know, a slightly varied, small community, you know? And, and the fact that the one has done wonderfully, and the housing values continue to be high. It, it's a nice part of Eden Prairie to live in. I think this will be, too. But it will have the green element of it that I sort of wish my home had been built with. And if I saw anything in that neighborhood, it might be people looking at these other homes that they can get more, and that they might have to do a little more themselves when they sell it to, to do energy efficiency. But I think most homes in Eden Prairie are starting to think about that anytime that they put on a new roof or new siding or whatever. It just makes financial sense to your household. So I'm glad we're going there. I'd like to get, you know, everything we can out of this since it is sort of where development might be going. And I'm glad that we've asked a little more of them, and they're starting to do a little more. And I am glad that we're seeing that we're matching the development right next to it, and, and that's probably a good thing, too. But I think our history with this kind of project has been good, and I think it will be good into the future.
Thank you. Just want to remind people, this is not a public hearing. In fact, we're not entertaining a motion tonight. a motion tonight, this is simply a report from our development director on where this project lies. And I, I think that, I, I think you guys all brought up some great points, and I agree with many of you, I think that this has fabulous potential. I'm not in favor of, uh, a public subsidy on this, I'm seeing the city as merely a catalyst to get something to happen that might not be able to happen if we weren't there to, um, be that catalyst. But I think that an important thing to do right now is to talk about some of the information that you feel you need when this finally does come back to us again, to help you make a better decision. And I'm just thinking, some of the things that I would like to see is, I'd like to see some traffic figures on what will actually happen on, on Thatcher if it does go through. Um, I would like to get some information on sound issues, what the impact is of, of taking out those berms, can trees be put in, excessive trees that might, um, cut down on some of that noise, what, what can possibly be done? Is there anything else that, that you guys feel that you need in order to make an informed decision on this? And I know the project is still changing, but, um, I'm just looking at some of the issues raised by residents and trying to be cognizant of those issues.
I do have one thing, I want a firm commitment on the developer's part that all the things that they have promised that are green will end up being there, actually.
And some protection for the city in that regard?
Well, yeah, I, I don't want suddenly there not to be a, a solar roof options, or, or they really aren't going into this green certification, or.
Right.
You know, I, I want all those I's dotted and T's crossed before it comes in where they are going to provide in this neighborhood what they've talked about and promised, and that that is financially viable for it.
Councilmember Aho.
I guess one of the things that always has concerned me, too, is that the city doesn't be on, doesn't end up on the hook for the, the cost of the property and the development. And so I want really clear assurances that if we do go ahead and purchase this, that it is transferred over directly, and that, you know, we have a clear path and we have, you know, ins and outs of that, and so it's a, it's a safe transaction.
And immediate.
And immediate.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, the next item is a report from our Park and Rec Director, Mr. Luthammer, on the Aquatic Expansion Project.
Councilmembers, Mayor, this item is to select a construction manager for the project, and it is in a couple different phases, but I want to just kind of give you a framework for thinking about this. Going back to two thousand and seven with the renovation in addition to the community center, this was the first time that the city had used a construction manager process. And the city's experience, as well as my past experience in, in park projects, has been a general contractor, where you have an architect, you do a design, you do a bid document, you go out for bids, and it's opened up to all contractors, and usually it's a general, that then will hire the many other sub-disciplines. And so they put in a bid or, or a proposal to do the work. In the case of two thousand and seven, the city elected to go with a construction management process. And the benefits of that process being is that instead of having that general contractor, you now have an agreement or a contract with a construction manager who isn't working on bringing in the subs as their employees, but is really working on behalf of the city. And my experience going through this the first time, not going through the selection process, but actually coming into the project as the construction trailer was arriving on site, my experience was that we really benefited from this construction manager process. When you have a particularly complex project, like it was the last time at the community center, and also when you get into some of the disciplines like pool projects, I think you want to be very selective in who that expert is that you have on site to help you with it. And so that, I think, is why we would recommend, again, going with a construction manager form of, of process instead of going out to the general contractor. Now, we still go out for bids, so when we go into the bid process, we still do have that public bid. And those contracts are then assigned to the construction manager, similar to how it happened in the past. And they are onsite, the way that it works, um, the, what we're asking for tonight is, there is a standard agreement out there that's widely used, that is the basis. Mr. Russell and I have been working with Brian Recker from RJM to put this agreement together. We still have a couple finer points to, to work out, just technical sides of the contract. But what it would be is mirroring what we just did with HGA, our architects. It's having two parts to it. The first part being where they would come on board to help us with the pre-construction pieces and the planning pieces. They've been helping us previous to this with cost estimates, they would do that as well. The benefit of bringing them on soon, not just for cost estimating, but you also have somebody that's familiar with the construction process. And so your plans and the bidding documents can be monitored by them and can be influenced by them, as well as the architect. So I think you have a, a better set of plans. The last time we brought them on, as I understand, fairly late in the process, um, with not very long to go. This time, we have a little bit more time to gain some of their expertise. So what the contract suggests is that we would pay them a lump sum for between now and when we go out to bid, for their part of the work. After that, should the council elect to move forward, again, just similar to how we worked with HGA, should the council elect to move forward, then we would execute the next part of the project or the contract with RJM as well, where they would become the construction manager for the entire project. That's based on, to explain their payment for, for you, that's based on a fee, and the fee in this case is two-point-two-five, that's proposed. The last project that we worked on with them, that fee was two-point-four. Industry standard is, is, if it was closer to three, that's still within an industry standard. So we feel like that two-point-two-five is a competitive price. The other piece is, they provide, and we would reimburse them as called out for in that agreement or standard agreement that we would be operating on. They call out for reimbursables for some of their direct staffing costs, for some of the costs that would otherwise be a part of the general contractor's, uh, costs that you would assume would come into play with your pricing from a general contractor. So we do get, have reimbursables that are spelled out within the contract for them, that's paid out throughout the contract as they're earned by them as well. And that would be, I should go back and tell you, the percentage, the two-point-two-five percent, is based on what's called the guaranteed maximum price. And that's, again, just like we had executed the last time with the community center renovation. Once the bids go out and they come back, that is when we know what the guaranteed maximum price is. The council approves that guaranteed maximum price and going forward with the project, those two would go hand in hand, one doesn't happen without the other. When, we've been telling you about the, in place, or the cost estimates, I should say, that are in place, the nineteen-point-four million, that has always included the cost of construction management, or the assumption that there would be a profit margin from a general contractor if it would go that way. It also has included all of the architectural fees that we've already, in some cases, taken on the first parts of them, and then would take on going forward. All of the site work, the testing, anything, there's some things, like some surveys that we've already incurred, but any of the future costs, too, all are wrapped into that nineteen-point-four million latest cost estimate that we did. So none of the costs that we're talking about tonight would become an expansion to what we've talked about, it's part of that contract. This is just a, a next step, or the timing to execute this construction management form of a contract. So again, what we'd be looking at tonight is forty-six thousand, or forty-three thousand seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, that takes us to and through bidding. And then after that, should the project move forward, then it's two-point-two-five percent of the guaranteed maximum price, which gets, uh, set after bids are opened. And then it's the reimbursable costs, and those are things that we have a person from RJM that's onsite at almost all times that construction is going on, all of their expertise, their inspection services, as well as some things like the normal construction mobilization costs and trailers and fax machines and things that get brought onto the site. It also, we would reimburse them for the liability and risk insurance that the project would take on. All of this very similar to how we did it with the last community center, uh, project. So, you know, the other question is, why an RJM? Since we first did the two thousand and seven project, I know Mr. Russell was getting requests from other city attorneys on how did you do it, what was the form of, of contract, things of that nature. We've had, um, calls from places like Edina, Chanhassen, Maple Grove, Maple Grove and Edina have used RJM multiple times since we did in two thousand and seven. Our experience was excellent with them, the other communities that I've talked to have excellent experience with them. And when you think about their knowledge of our current building that we're going to be attaching to, it's really a very good fit. They are very familiar with the project that we are working on right now, and have been a part of consulting with the architect prior to tonight, and have been very helpful. So that gives you why our staff recommendation for this process and also for selecting RJM. So with that, I'd answer, any questions you might have?
Any questions for Mr. Luthammer?
Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion?
I would move to authorize construction manager agreement with RJM for services prior to bidding and additional services if bids are awarded.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Next item is the Mayor's Health and Wellness Committee update, Mr. Luthammer.
Yes, the action item for this is to authorize staff as well as committee members of the Mayor's Health and Wellness Committee to move forward with a fundraising effort for a food truck. But tonight, I want to tell you a little broader perspective of, of what we've been doing, um, working with this committee. Both myself and City Manager, Mr. Getcho, as well as Mayor Tyra Lukens have been a part of all of the previous meeting of this committee, and it's, uh, been an exciting committee to be a part of. The people that we have attracted, and, um, the mayor had been hearing from some people when the city first passed the Healthy Living Resolution, um, there were people that came forward and, and were really engaged with health and wellness activities, and they really formed the basis of the committee. And then as the word got out, we started hearing from even more people. And so in your packet, there's a list of community members that have been a part of it, and it ranges from school district staff who are a part of the food service program, to Terry Pika, representing some of our local growers and farmers, to, um, health and wellness, um, home occupation business, to fitness trainers, to nutritionists. Um, it's, it's quite the, the breadth of knowledge and backgrounds, and, and I think even more importantly, the enthusiasm for this type of a committee and project. So we've met several times as a full committee, and to get going, a little bit slow to try to figure out, you know, where do you narrow your focus? Health and wellness is such a, a broad topic. And what we really started to find through conversations was nutrition was something that was important to this group, and felt like if we honed in towards that area, we could start to make a real impact within the community. So as that narrowed, we've also come up with three focus areas, um, and they're really starting to gain some momentum as subcommittees. The first one being fundraising. We have people that work with, um, corporate health and wellness, as well as insurance companies. And so there's a real core group that wants to explore, how do we look for grants and how do we look for funding from healthcare that might help us with these types of initiatives? The second piece, um, that's being looked at is a, a restaurant initiative. And we've heard about this with some programs or projects like the Blue Zones down in Albert Lee, where they got the restaurant community involved, and some of them actually made changes to their menus. But if nothing else, some of them identified it, identified on their menus those healthy and nutritious items. So people, by seeing the star or the logo, would know that if they selected that off the menu, they would be at a certain nutritional level and also, um, in a health and wellness type of a menu. So that's another subcommittee that's starting to meet and then going to work on methods for engaging the restaurant community. And then the third one is the Live Well Food Truck. And when you think about it, we, as a city, have continued to struggle with concessions at, at many of our outdoor events. And there's a couple reasons for that. One, um, health code is, is fairly strict, and, and rightly so. We want people, you know, to be safe and, and healthy at our events. And in order to do that with good cooking, um, you really need some equipment, and you need some covered and cooled and heated scenarios. And in a lot of our cases, we've been trying to do this, and when I say we, not just park and recreation programs, like our concerts and our other, um, events that we might have, like the theater programs, but also the Lions Clubs and, and schooner days and things of that nature. When you try to do it under a tent, um, you can do things like hot dogs, and you can do prepackaged, and you can do pops and, you know, canned, um, canned sodas and things, but it's really hard to do good quality food. And so how can we not have a concession stand at each one of these locations, which is costly, but have more of a mobile concession stand? And as we've been talking about it, we already have a pretty good footprint at the community center with healthy vending and also a healthy café, as we call it there, where you can get yogurt parfaits and salads and bags of carrots and vegetables. And so that can really act as the basis for the storage and the prep area for a food truck concept. When you look at all the events that are out there, especially given what we've now seen at Round Lake and the re-energizing at Round Lake, which is very similar now to what is at Riley, and when you think of on a daily basis where that could move to, in addition to our special events like concerts in the park, uh, the theater programs, how it can help serve at some of the athletic, um, weekend events, that maybe there isn't a concession stand there, but the, the food truck could be there, it, it has a lot of possibilities to it. You think about Southwest buses, Southwest Transit buses, and how they've done some pretty unique advertising with wraps, and how that catches your attention. A similar thing can be done with what you'd think of as a UPS truck, um, converted into a food truck, and have a wrap on it that is promotional and really conveys the benefits of healthy eating and healthy living. And it really becomes that ice cream truck of our past, maybe, instead that might have the yogurt, that might have the chicken breast, that might allow parents to say, I don't have to swing through a fast food restaurant, or I don't have to quickly pack at home, I know when I go to that concert on a Sunday night that I can actually get a meal and not just a bag of popcorn. And so we think that it can really enhance, uh, some of the community events that are out there. And it can also help the infrastructure of some of our organizations, like Alliance or Rotary, or some of the youth athletic associations that might want to use it, um, for some of their events, and to help them with some fundraising. As we've talked about this at our committee level, um, there's a lot of excitement around it. Um, there's a lot of excitement to look at fundraising. When you think about naming rights potential on the back of it, you know, we've been fortunate enough to have people step forward with the edible playground and, uh, put money towards gardens. And so we think that there's people out there that, you know, would want to step forward and be a part of bringing healthier opportunities, um, to events that we already have, and maybe expanding on some where we haven't been able to provide, uh, food services. So, um, the committee guided by staff, very similar to what we've been talking about with the Miracle Field, we did meet with the, uh, foundation, uh, Eden Prairie Community Foundation Board to make them aware of this as a potential for them being a source of fundraising for this project. When you think about crowdsourcing or crowdfunding, um, we've seen a few, I know, again, the mayor and Mr. Getcho and I have received more national crowdfunding. Um, we really see something like this as being local crowdfunding, using the Eden Prairie Community Foundation being that, uh, bank account for it, but really getting people from Eden Prairie to come forward and help fund a project like this. We looked at it from a, a, kind of a revenue expense side of things. We think that this could be a self-sustaining, given the many events and places that we could be at, our experience with concessions at the community center, our experience with concessions out at, at events, we think that going forward, that this could be something that could be self-sustaining. So in other words, enough revenue to offset the expenses of it, but then also to hopefully be able to put money forward so that when the truck needed to be replaced in the future, that it would have the opportunity, uh, to fund itself. So the action item, again, is to, to authorize staff and, and committee members to put together a fundraising, potentially naming rights effort, work with the Eden Prairie Foundation Board, and to move forward with the concept.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Aho.
Well, it sounds like you guys have done a lot of research on this, and I'm, I'm impressed with all the, all the data and, and all the research you've done. One of the questions that I have, that I didn't really see any information on, is there, there's currently a, a big popular trend where there's, there's some really high-quality food trucks out there. And I know in certain areas in Minneapolis, they, they allow them to come in, and, I mean, the quality of food that they're providing is very top-notch and, you know, excellent food quality. And I think in terms of health choices and things like that, it's, it ranks right up there. It's not, you know, your average mini donuts and hot dog kind of a, kind of a food truck. They're, they're pretty good. They're pretty good quality and also healthy. So, have we looked into anything that would allow that type of a vendor to come in and provide food services at some of our parks and some of our venues and some of our events, as opposed to us taking this on? My concern is that, you know, I mean, it takes time, it takes staffing, it takes, you know, there's, this is not, you know, simple to start getting into the food business. And I know we're in it to some degree already, as you mentioned, at the community center. But, you know, moving it into a mobile situation is a different animal. And I'm not sure that, you know, we're totally prepared to do that, whereas there's a lot of people doing that already. So, what's your comment on that, I guess?
Yeah, we have talked about that concept or the model that's used more in the downtown area, where, you know, major densities of office buildings, and they all kind of vie for their position. And I don't think it's 11:30, you can come in and line up, and some don't make it and some do. And there's almost a state fair feeling to when you're down there. I can't remember if it's Nicola or which street it is, but, yeah, you can choose from Mexican or Chinese or Spanish or you name it. You can walk up and down the street and make your choice. The concept of, could you contract that out? In that same model, we don't think that that's appealing to those types of food trucks, that they would, you know, come in and go from kind of a park to a park and be as flexible as what we might ask them to be, or is able to tailor their food to what the events might be, to have more of a theme towards it. So that's where it feels like, in order for this to work, it's not necessarily a high-profit margin, which wouldn't be as appealing to the private food industry. It's more of, the reason that it works for us is it dovetails right out of the community center, and it works with some of our other events and locations. We've also, Prop has asked us to come and meet with them and make their board familiar with this next week. And one of the reasons that that conversation started to get going is there might be some other, you know, daytime delivery uses for it, too, as it's on a certain route that community organizations like a Prop could partner with in a low-cost way that they potentially couldn't do with a private food vendor.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
I think this is a great idea to bring, actually, a food truck type of thing to a lot of our events that don't have it. The only thing I'd sort of hate to do is to see us eliminate all vendors from some other things, like the Fourth of July or even Arts in the Park and such. I assume we're not thinking of doing that because the once-a-year corn dog on the Fourth of July maybe isn't all that unhealthy.
Yeah. And I'm not the best person to promote healthy only because of my chocolate and want of corn dogs and mini-donuts, too. So I have to be really careful when I'm at the committee meetings because I'm probably at the low end of commitment to health food. But, you know, if you think about the Fourth of July, we have five or six trailers there already. And if you think about the lines, there's no way that one could even service all of that at another event. And certainly, you know, like a Rotary Rib Fest and where they might bring in a cotton candy machine and things like that, that's, you know, those are still good and viable options that we want to have out there. This just gives that other option. And I think what it also does, too, whether you view it as intangible or not, this is pretty unique, and it would be unique for a city to do this. And to see a truck with a wrap on it that might have some colorful vegetables and some slogans and sayings about the importance of eating well and living well, if nothing else, that communicates to people and it sends a message. I don't think it sends a heavy-handed message, but I think it keeps people's awareness and thoughts out there of, how do I make some of those choices? You know, when we would serve, instead of, you know, ice cream, it might be frozen yogurt with pika raspberries on top at certain times of the year. When we would do the sweet corn as one of the menu items that would come from Seaver's farm as well, those are things that, you know, you could have out on the message board or the menu board that indicates that that's where this produce is coming from and really promote that local piece to it as well. So there are certainly some marketing and communication benefits to something like this as well, but also the way it would up the quality of what we can do at our events instead of the Snicker bar and the can of Mountain Dew, because it's really difficult to do more with a tent and a cooler. And now, you have a ready-made kitchen where you can have a good grill and you can have the proper sanitation and hand washing and storage and freezer that allows you to do some pretty good things. We talked about one of the concepts of maybe people get to know and we can publish a schedule that on Sunday nights before the Sunday night concert, we have a guest chef that night. And it might be from a popular restaurant, a guest chef from a Lucia's or from a Santorini's. And they put together a specific menu that would, you know, add a little flair to the concert as well.
Okay. Thank you. Excellent report. Appreciate it. We need a motion?
Yes, please.
Move to authorize staff and Mayor's Health and Wellness Committee members to develop a fundraising and naming rights program and to seek the assistance of the Eden Prairie Community Foundation to support a fundraising effort.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. The final thing on our agenda is an update from our city attorney on e-cigarettes. And this was an item that Councilmember Case brought forward at our December meeting, I believe it was. Not that he had a sense that he wanted to have any kind of an ordinance or take any action on this, but that he wanted to get some information on what other cities are doing, what the concerns are with these cigarettes, and kind of get ahead of the issue. So, Mr. Russo?
Yes, I'll go over to the podium. I have a short PowerPoint.
Okay.
Present the materials that were in your packet in summary form.
We're getting the motions in the back, they don't work.
They don't work. Could you, Lorene, just do the slides while I just go back?
Or you could sit by Councilmember Nelson if you want to. Okay.
Okay. Will that work? I think that's it. Well? Okay. Um, as the mayor said, Councilmember Case asked for a report on e-cigarettes and what is happening in the state and other cities. So, we took a look at the literature that was out there. E-cigarettes are mainly a device that heats vapor and produces a smoke-like effect when you draw on it. They generally contain nicotine or other substances, flavors. They don't normally contain tobacco. They come in a variety. There are over 250 types of e-cigarettes. There are multiple types of flavors that they come in. Many of them have nicotine, some do not. The University of Minnesota and others are studying the health effects of e-cigarettes, but there are no published reports that we're aware of yet. And it's difficult for them because there is no packaging requirements on an e-cigarette as to what's in it. And I'll get into that a little bit more. The FDA, on a national level, the FDA has tried to regulate them as therapeutic devices, but a court struck that down and said that they did not have authority to do that unless e-cigarettes were being marketed for therapeutic purposes, and they're not. And so, now, the FDA is in the process of rulemaking to determine whether it will regulate them as cigarettes, as tobacco products. And we expected regulations to be issued last October. They have not been. The National Association of Attorneys Generals has more recently pressed the FDA to issue regulations on this, but as of tonight, nothing's been done. The state of Minnesota has a prohibition on the sale of e-cigarettes that contain nicotine. And they do that by changing the definition of cigarettes to include devices that include nicotine in them. So, the sale of e-cigarettes to minors, those 18 years in age or younger, is prohibited. And the Revenue Department taxes e-cigarettes as cigarettes under a similar change in definition, using the term nicotine and other substances to be able to tax them as cigarettes. And they place the burden on the seller to establish that they aren't containing nicotine, which may be difficult for the seller since the packaging the seller receives doesn't identify what the ingredients are either. Several Minnesota legislators have indicated an intent to bring to the legislature this 2014 session, an amendment to the Minnesota Clean Indoor Air Act to add e-cigarettes to that act. Again, it'll be interesting to see whether they limit that to nicotine or to all vapor-producing electronic cigarettes. Other states have taken action to prohibit e-cigarettes in a variety of places, just like their Clean Indoor Air Act, to workplaces, restaurants, gambling facilities, state workplaces, et cetera, rail systems, commuter systems, buses. Other Minnesota entities, such as the county, we could have asked Commissioner Calhoun tonight about this. Hennepin County has banned the use of e-cigarettes on county property, similar to the city's ban of tobacco products in city facilities, city vehicles, and city parks. Beltrami County has required that sellers be licensed, and they've banned sampling of e-cigarettes in stores. The Mall of America and Target Field have prohibited the use of e-cigarettes in their premises, and several local transit companies also prohibit it. On the more local level, some of our sister cities, three sister cities have instituted a moratorium on retail sales. Two cities have instituted a moratorium on sampling. Now, this is under the zoning interim moratorium that cities are allowed to place on while they study the situation. It's an interesting use of a moratorium. We don't normally think of it as affecting the actual retail activity that is going on, on the premises. We think of it more as the broader use, but the statute is, in my opinion, broad enough to allow them to do that. Four other cities have prohibited the use on public property. Several cities have prohibited the use on private property, bars, restaurants, et cetera. Four cities have prohibited sampling in retail locations. So, you've probably seen, Star Tribune had an article about, several articles about e-cigarettes and the vaping shops and sampling of these. And several cities have prohibited their sampling. And four, seven cities, including another city that I represent, have required a license for retail sales of e-cigarettes in a manner similar to a license that you need for regular cigarettes. In terms of the actions that the city can take, we've identified four. And, you know, I haven't moved the PowerPoint too much here. Didn't want to keep you too long tonight. But, there are a number of actions. One, you can do nothing and wait until federal and state regulations are adopted and revisit the issue at that time. Second, you could do, as several cities have done, and require a license for the retail sale of e-cigarettes. This allows you to do the kinds of checks that are done with the sale of tobacco to make sure that e-cigarettes aren't being sold to minors if they contain nicotine. Third, you could prohibit the use of e-cigarettes on city property by incorporating an appropriate definition into our city tobacco and smoke-free ordinance that's already adopted. We could also expand that to prohibit the use of e-cigarettes in areas covered by the Minnesota Clean Indoor Air Act and not wait for the legislature to do that. And last, you could institute a moratorium on the sale and of retail sale of e-cigarettes by doing something similar to what several other metropolitan cities have done. I also thought it might be instructive for the council to see what an e-cigarette looks like. And so, I took one for the team, and we went out and purchased one. And I've actually used it. I really took one for the team. So, and I can tell you, I didn't like it. This is an e-cigarette. Comes in two pieces. The substance gets deposited in this part of the e-cigarette. And this is the part that you charge with a USB connector. You hook this up to the USB connector and put it in your computer, and it charges it. And so, you screw this on, and then you have to be pretty agile, because there's a little button here, and you have to press that five times in two seconds. And if you do that, then this will flash. Took me several times to do that. But this little button flashes, and it tells you that it's on. And then, if you want to use it, you put it in your mouth like a cigarette, and you hold this button and you draw in, and when you breathe out, you breathe out a smoke-like vapor. To turn it off, you do the same thing. You click it five times in two seconds. The light flashes, and it saves the battery. So I don't want to be the first city attorney to light up during a council meeting, so I will avoid that tonight. But that's what an e-cigarette is. It does produce a rather large vapor, depending on how much you draw. And so, I can understand the concerns of people seeing people smoking this or drawing on it and blowing out a vapor and then wondering, what is it that's being blown my way? So, stand for any questions the council may have about e-cigarettes.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, these cities that have established moratoriums, are they time-limited? Are they saying, until the FDA makes a decision or until the state makes a motion, we're going to have a moratorium? Or is it three months till we complete our study? How are they doing it?
Under state law, the moratorium can only last for 12 months. You have the option to extend it for an additional period, not to exceed six months. But I believe those cities have adopted the 12-month extent of the moratorium. And under the statute, you just can't put a moratorium on. You've got to adopt, at the same time you put the moratorium on, you have to direct that a study be undertaken to gather information that will inform you about the kind of regulations that you want to establish, similar to what we did with the digital electronic billboards, placed a moratorium on those, adopted a resolution saying, "We're going to study that in order to determine what the appropriate regulation was."
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Case.
Just a question about a comment that you made, Mr. Russo, about our current ban on tobacco products. And it made me think, is that a fairly easy definitional fix? If we were to, as it sounds like state statutes or other places have looked at, viewing nicotine products and incorporating it in a definition as tobacco-related, and therefore, that would, in a sense, be a quick fix to cover our public places for e-cigarettes that contain nicotine?
Mr. Case, yes, I believe it's a definitional matter. And several cities have adopted definitions used by the state, as well as federal definitions. And so, that would not be difficult to do.
I, there's five of us here, so let's have a conversation. But I like the moratorium idea because it buys us a year into the future where we wait to see what happens at a federal and state and county level. Clearly, there are issues here and potential health issues that we just don't really know yet. And maybe even not just, maybe even beyond a health issue. And maybe even not just, maybe even beyond a health issue, a perceived discomfort issue on the part of all non-smokers in the world as, as vapors being blown into your face. So I would like to see, I mean, personally, I have my personal preference on where I'd like to see it go. I'd like to see some kind of a ban in our public places. And then at least to investigate, depending on what happens at a federal, state, and county level, what happens in all clean air areas that are covered under the Clean Air Act. But the 12-month moratorium into early 2015 would probably allow us a chance to do a lot of study, come up with some proposals, and in the meantime, see what happens at a federal, state, and county level. That's just my personal preference, but I throw that out as a beginning conversation piece.
Councilmember Aho.
When, when we talk about a moratorium, what have the other cities done in that moratorium? So in other words, is the moratorium to prevent sales, prevent use? You know, how encompassing? What are the parameters on that moratorium?
For instance, the city of Hopkins approved an ordinance establishing a moratorium on the sale of e-cigarettes, is how they worded it. And then in the moratorium section itself, they say, there's established and enacted the prohibition of the creation, establishment, or operation of any business in the city of Hopkins which sells e-cigarettes or liquid products used in them, other than those businesses which currently have valid tobacco licenses. And that it further prohibits any business currently licensed to sell tobacco, which also sells e-cigarettes, from allowing the onsite sampling of e-cigarettes. The city of Edina adopted a moratorium. Let me just look for one second, make sure I, if I can. Hopkins was a one-year moratorium, as, as indicated. The city of Edina adopted a moratorium to prohibit, to, to allow the evaluation of smoking lounges and vapor lounges. And so their moratorium is not as broad as the moratorium in the city of Hopkins. They cite substantial concerns about zoning ordinances not adequately addressing these matters, and that they'll conduct studies, and that it's the intent to allow them to consider that. So pending completion of that, smoking lounges and vapor lounges are prohibited in the city of Edina. So that's, so two approaches and different, two different approaches of neighboring cities.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I don't know who was next. Councilmember Wickstrom?
No, my view on this is that there's not a lot known about it, but there's a lot of research being done right now on this device. So I would agree with the moratorium with the notion that in a year's time, we can figure out what, what it is we want to do permanently with it. But I think that it, I think it's more of a thoughtful approach, not to just make a big decision until we know more about it. So what kind of moratorium? Which of the, would it be broad? Would it be? I'm not sure. What do you think?
I, the comment that I would make is, I felt really strongly about the whole cigarette smoking, tobacco issue, because of the aspect of people that don't want to be subjected to the fumes and the dangerous chemicals that might be in the smoke are subjected to it. So similarly, in this case, this is a situation where these products aren't even labeled. We don't even know what's in them, what harmful chemicals might be in them. Some have nicotine, some don't. Some have, might have other things, additives, smell enhancers, other things that we don't even know, and those are going into the vapor that's being blown by people that are non-participants in the smoking of the e-cigarette. So it seems like the, the public use issue would be the one I would like to see a moratorium on.
So for instance, if I could, could respond, the, the taste of this e-cigarette is, I can't describe what it tastes like. I wish I could, but it just defies my description. But they come in all flavors, and this one is called Cowboy Killer. But it doesn't tell me what's in it. Now, I didn't specifically buy Cowboy Killer. My office assistant did, when I told her, go out and get me one so I can demonstrate. She came back with Cowboy Killer. I said, weren't there any other choices? She said, yes, I could have gotten Bubble Gum. And my secretary told me that Bubble Gum actually tastes better than Cowboy Killer, because she's tried both. But you're right. I mean, that just goes that there's, there's nothing to tell me on this, other than where it was purchased, in Maplewood, as to what's in it. Absolutely nothing.
And you're going to suck it into your lungs and blow?
Not anymore.
Yeah. Especially the name like Cowboy Killer. Councilmember Case?
To Brad's point, which I actually completely agree with, that's, shouldn't be a surprise. I agree with you a lot. Just came out like it sounded like this is a surprise. I'm not suggesting tonight, you know, we jump into a moratorium because that's the $64,000 question, what's in that moratorium? So my thought is that if we agree tonight that we would direct staff to move, move towards bringing back to us what, what might be in a moratorium? What do we want in, or do we even want one? I mean, just leave that out there. But I'm thinking that before they would move ahead, we'd want probably a consensus that we would agree that we would want to move towards a moratorium, but what's in there? We all have our ideas on that, and we could maybe cafeteria-wise pick from that, because maybe we do want point-of-sale, you know, temporary moratorium. Maybe we do want use, certain way, certainly experimentation or whatever at a point of sale. So it, it seems to me that, that if we decide, all I'm asking really tonight, and it can, you can all say no, but it would be, should we direct staff to move ahead towards bringing back to us some ideas that might be in a moratorium? And maybe within the next month or two, we enact it. And then, then with clear expectations of what happens during that one year, that we would go out and have staff then, and maybe send it out to, do we have a commission that would relate to this? I'm not sure, but probably not. Send it back to staff then, that would come back with what's happening in other cities, what's happening at the federal, state, and county level. And then with the goal that by one year down the road, we, we would either put it to rest and say no, or, or we enact something. So I, I don't know what's in that moratorium, but it feels like we should put a hole in something. And if we're really concerned about the health nature of not knowing what's in these, that, then the moratorium includes whatever it is to give us some comfort regarding the unknown. And then, and then we come back and visit something on a more permanent basis.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, I have had the unfortunate experience of having someone at a restaurant table smoking one of these. And I found it, though, not quite as objectionable as a cigarette close. And the whole idea of a, a whole restaurant filled with tables with these would certainly stop me from going to said restaurant. But if we have a moratorium, I, I would like to have it soon, before businesses get used to having that part of their income stream. Also, I sort of agree with Nancy. I, I'd really like to not have people smoking, you know, especially not in enclosed places in the city of this stuff. You know, perhaps the one I was near, I didn't make any inquiries as to what the name of it was, but it, you know, it really, I, I was really surprised when the person pulled this out and started smoking. And so I would both like it done relatively quickly, and I wouldn't be at all, you know, I'm willing to do a moratorium to wait to see what the federal and state does. But if I didn't think they were going to do something about it soon, I guess I would say, let's look at the wording for a ban of these. As, I really don't want to be inhaling somebody smoking something that perhaps only is as obnoxious as, you know, a, a fragrance thing that puffs at you as you walk through your house. But then I don't allow those in my house or want them anywhere near me either, so.
You know, I haven't talked to anybody who hasn't been ecstatic about the smoking, public smoking ban statewide. Everybody seems to love it, the restaurants that I've talked to, the waitstaff at restaurants, the restaurant owners, the, the people that go to those restaurants. I'm not saying that everybody's in favor of it, but very, very high. Right now, there's nothing those restaurants can do to have that person that was sitting by you stop. So I'm kind of in favor of anything that gives, gives those restaurants the ability to not have people smoking e-cigarettes in their restaurants.
Wouldn't they, I would think they would have the opportunity to tell people, guests of their restaurant, it's their facility, they own the facility, they're operating it. They could tell people, we don't allow e-cigarettes in, use in our, in our facility.
Yeah, but then you.
They could have done that with cigarettes.
They could have done it with cigarettes, yeah.
Right. I think, I mean, they do have the opportunity to do that.
Right. They do. But it can make customers upset, and it's easier if they can pass the buck on to somebody else.
Understand.
I don't know. Yeah, councilmember.
Just to, to kind of bring this to estimation, and I, it, it feels like there's even a, somewhat of a consensus that we, we even move beyond a moratorium. But it feels like at least a moratorium buys us the time to study and, and, and do it right. And, and that might even mean we end up a year from now going further than we would have if we jumped at something because we were maybe worried getting out too far ahead of whatever. So a year, it seems like if we do it right, the moratorium, we can put into the moratorium all the safeguards that people are concerned about if we were to, the need to quickly enact a ban that would accomplish, you know, the concerns for health. So we could put that into a moratorium. And then in the meantime, we get the benefit of everyone else out there that's also studying this, and we get the benefit of any laws that get passed at a federal, state, or county level. And in a year, then we can act precisely, clearly, knowledgeably, the way that, that we need to go. But we need to do the moratorium well enough in the short term. So that's, and I agree with you with the expediency. So I don't know if that's two of us, if there's another person, but if we could direct staff, I don't know if they, I don't know if we need it by the next meeting, but within a month, come back with moratorium options and maybe some sample language, and we can enact that. And then that gets us into February 2015. We have all that time to do study, find out what others are doing, and then we move. But the moratorium can accomplish short term, what we want long term to satisfy, like anybody's concerns that we want to move on this. What do you think?
One of the things that Hopkins had a moratorium on was on new retailers selling cigarettes. So I'm just wondering if we wait for another month before we have examples of what a moratorium could look like, and then it's another several months beyond that when we actually, I don't know.
Is the law prohibiting us from, I mean, no one's grandfathered in. Were you worried that somebody jumps in the month?
Well, that's, right. Because they, their moratorium was on new retail sales.
Right. That is, that is a, an issue. It's a moratorium prohibiting the establishment and the sale, and if, if there's currently sales going on, then traditionally, a moratorium would not affect the current use. What I, what I hear the council talking about are really two separate items. One is the moratorium, which is the retail sale, the sampling in stores. That operation. And the second concern is city and places and private places, which doesn't need a moratorium. Hopkins and Edina did not adopt moratoriums for those purposes. I have the extract of the minutes of another city, I believe it's Ely, where they proposed to have a moratorium on the use and, pardon me, the use and sampling of these products in public places and the sale and use. And so I need to look more closely at how they put a moratorium on the use of the product in public places. I think that's more in the nature of our city smoke-free ordinance, where you just adopt an amendment to that ordinance to include e-cigarettes, or you, you adopt something broader, which would be the next step to mirror the Minnesota Indoor Clean Act, Air Act. So there, the moratorium doesn't get at everything you're talking about. It gets at a part of it. The other part of it is the prohibition of use within city facilities, preventing people from vaping at, at a city council meeting, or in city vehicles if there's another person present, those kinds of things.
But that, there's no grandfathering in concern there. I mean, that, we can wait a month or two and pass something, or six months, or, but the piece that.
That's correct.
I hear Nancy being concerned about is, if we wait one month to have a moratorium on the point of purchase, sale, and, and, and use, what am I trying to say, experimentation practice at, at that point of purchase, sale, location, someone could rush in in the next month.
Yeah, yeah.
But we can't enact a moratorium tonight. I don't.
No.
I mean, so, you know.
No, and you know, I'll have to think this through a little bit more, because this is all kind of new here on these discussion points. You know, I guess I'm not so concerned with the sale, because if, if the sale is going to be regulated, if children can't buy it, if they're licensed sellers, you know, I don't have a problem if somebody wants to smoke one of these e-cigarettes in the privacy of their own home. Fine, go out and buy one. I don't, I don't care. It's more the public use that is a concern to me.
What about if they go to the counter, they can't experiment with a cigarette right today at a counter?
Right, right.
But they could.
We could do, we could do that.
But, but again, maybe the concern there is not the grandfathering in piece. I, I still think, okay, I, I'm back to thinking that let's have staff come back in a month with what a moratorium would and would not cover, and what it would, would and would not look like. And then maybe we can address at that point, too, where do we want to go further with our parks and our public places? And do we want it to match our, the, the current ban on cigarette smoking in restaurants and public places? That's kind of a longer, out-there decision or discussion.
Right.
But pu, public places, smoking cigarettes currently is a state issue, not a, not a city issue.
Except for the parks.
Yeah, right. You're right.
Correct. But we initially passed it as a city issue, and we certainly.
Right, but it's more of a state law than a.
But we can ask that. We can also go beyond, of course, state law, like Wilmington did with cigarettes and, was it 30 feet outside of a public entrance door or something? But I don't want to leave it. And I, and I still would like more information, and I feel like at least it keeps it alive if we direct staff to come back with the, what this moratorium piece would look like. Two meetings out, that gives some time, I think it's at enough time. And maybe by that point, we decide the moratorium isn't the, the tool that works for us, or maybe we decide it is. And we, maybe we'll have an opportunity, if the papers cover it, to get us some additional feedback from others.
Now, is the legislature looking at this this year?
Several legislators have said that they intend to bring legislation to include this type of device in the Minnesota Indoor Clean Air Act.
Okay, but we don't know what it's going to look like.
We don't know what it'll look like at this point. There may be someone drafting the legislation as we sit here, but the legislature doesn't meet, I believe, until the middle of February this year.
All right.
Are we okay with a consensus just direction? We don't need a motion or anything? Just another report comes back in a month?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. It was very thorough.
Thanks for taking one for the team.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
We're not smoking here tonight.
Anything else to bring before the council tonight? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
So second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have meeting adjourned.